Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Delhi Township Board of Trustees Meeting for August the 10th, 2016. We'll begin the evening with a moment of silence. This meeting's moment of silence is dedicated to two individuals, the first being the matriarch of the Jasper family. Pat Jasper passed away about a week ago, and she was the wife of Lieutenant Dawn Jasper, and the family has... she's a grandmother of six, and the grandmother of 12, and the great-grandmother of four. So we send our condolences to the Jasper family on the loss of Pat. Secondly, to all of us who grew up in Delhi, we knew this gentleman is the pediatrician of Delhi, and that's Dr. John Williams, also passed during this last week. So we offer our condolences to the Williams family as well. He was a pediatrician to so many of us that grew up here. He was the father of two and the grandfather of six. I'd like you all to now join me in a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll begin with motions for consideration, Mr. Looby.
Motion 2016-129, approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees' meeting held on July 27th, 2016, and dispense with the reading.
I move motion 2016-129 to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees' meeting.
I second the motion. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes.
Motion 2016-130, approve bills for payment.
I move motion 2016-130 to approve bills for payment.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes.
Motion 2016-131, approve the payment of overtime for pay period ending August 2nd, 2016.
I move motion 2016-131 to approve the payment of overtime.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes.
Motion 2016-132, approve the hiring of Chance A. Schneider, part-time seasonal service worker with the Parks and Recreation Department at a rate of $8.81 per hour, effective August 11th, 2016.
I approve... I move the motion 2016-132 to approve the hiring of Chance A. Schneider.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion 2016-133, approve the promotion of Austin D. Lucan from part-time firefighter EMT to part-time firefighter paramedic, effective August 11th, 2016, per the collective bargaining agreement with the Delhi Firefighters Association.
I move motion 2016-133 to approve the promotion of Austin D. Lucan.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion 2016-134, approve the promotion of Walter J. Russell from part-time firefighter EMT to part-time firefighter paramedic, effective August 11th, 2016, per the collective bargaining agreement with the Delhi Firefighters Association.
I move motion 2016-134 to approve the promotion of Walter J. Russell.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion 2016-135, accept the award for a grant from the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation Workplace Wellness Program for a reimbursable grant up to $15,000 in funding over a four-year period, no matching funds required, and authorize a human resources manager to facilitate the grant requirements and submissions.
I move motion 2016-135 to accept the award for a grant for the Workplace Wellness Program.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion 2016-136, accept the award for a grant from the Hamilton County Department of Planning and Development, 2016 CDBG Planning Mini Grants, funded by Community Development Block Grant Administrative Funds, to conduct an economic impact analysis plan for the Delhi Pike Bike Path Project, reimbursable grant up to $20,000 in funding with no matching funds required, and authorize the Community Development Director to facilitate the grant requirements and submissions.
I move motion 2016-136 to accept the award for a grant for the 2016 CDBG Planning Mini Grants.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Presentations this evening. We have a presentation this evening from Pete Pritchard, who is the chairman of the Bicentennial Steering Committee. Mr. Pritchard.
Well, good evening. Well, here I am again, once again, for a brief bicentennial update, but I cannot believe it is August. This bicentennial year is flying by. I always felt like that the planning stages all last year, 2015, seemed like a drag on, and now that we're in it, it's just flying by. But as you know, we've had a lot of activities going on here in the township so far this year, and much more to come, which is I want to start right in on. I'd like to start with the Delhi Bicentennial Cookbook they are in. And as you can see, you can obtain an order form currently to order them either at Robin Florst, or at the Delhi Senior Center, or here at the Administration Building. The current price here for this is $12.84, of course, that's tax included, and that is until August of '15, so we just got five more days. After that, it's going to go up. Cost per book will be $16.01. But we do encourage everyone to give it a try. It's some great stuff in there, and there's been a lot of work to get that put together, but they are in, so please check it out. A second thing I'd like to mention, of course, which Tony Kappel from the Delhi Business Association has approached your board, I know telling you about the Dog Days of Delhi, and of course, that's coming up here Saturday, August 27th. It's at the old Tot Lot, and there are many events occurring that day. This is going to be a really big deal. And just to touch on a few things, as we've talked about in the past, there is indeed a fishing tournament, starting at 8:00 a.m. at the lake, of course. From there, there's going to be a contest for dog owners. Of course, that explains why the title of the other day. But there'll be a contest for owners and their dogs, including the best trick, cutest dog, and of course, the best trick. There'll also be a wiener dog race. We do have a few wiener dogs that are indeed registered and ready to go, so we got working on that as well. And of course, one of my favorites is the hot dog eating contest. All the hot dogs and everything are being provided by local Delhi Skyline Chili, and there also will be another event during this Dog Day is going to be sponsored by the Delhi Historical Society. It's called Frontier Days. There's going to be many, many things going on through the Frontier Days, but I'd like to mention that there is going to be a vintage baseball game held on Field Number One, and that is being brought on by a team called the Norwood Black Bottoms. I've not seen them, but this is what they do. They do come out and literally play baseball as if it was the 1800s, so that'll be kind of interesting to see, so. I'd like to touch also is on September the 10th, again, another event being sponsored by the Delhi Historical Society. This is going to be the Delhi Antiques Roadshow. Now, you have to register if you want to have something that you may have, that's some form of an antique that you'd like to have appraised, you do have to register, and that is by going on the Historical Society's website, delhihistoricalsociety.org, and register. But what I want to mention, and to be honest with you, I didn't realize in the beginning, but the person coming to do the appraisals, his name is Frank Loomis, and he is literally esteemed throughout the country here. He's a newspaper and magazine columnist, but the biggest part is, and some people may recognize this, he is an appraiser on the Antiques Roadshow that you see on PBS, our Channel 48 locally. It's him. He is coming here to Delhi to perform this. I think that's kind of neat. I mean, we're talking someone that's got really, you know, a lot behind him. So he is here going to be for that as well. I want to mention September 23rd, Mount St. Joseph University having their 5K run. And two days later, Sunday, September 25th, is an event, which I think is kind of interesting, called the Delhi Pike's Peak. So that's kind of a tongue twister here. Delhi Pike's Peak. That's an open house, of course, over at the university itself, and also at the Mother House Complex, and also at Bailey Place. This is a tour of all three of their facilities for the day. I'd like to expand on this a little bit, only because I've got a little experience with that. It comes to the Mother House over there. I honestly believe that most people here in Delhi really do not really understand the treasure that's over there at 5900 Deli, at the Mother House. I mean, that is a historic building that most people just drive by. They look at it from a distance as they go down Bender Road or whatever. But this is a chance to get into that complex and look at all the architectural details of the building, and needless to say, the chapel there, that speaks for itself. That went through a major restoration here back in 1999, and they're going to show everything also. I really encourage people, go over there and check what's going on over there and see what the Good Sisters are up to, so. I do have one, just one quick question. How about the bicentennial banners? Can we get those back up now that the skirt game is... went through? Is that at all possible?
Greg, we'll get them back up.
Back up, okay, very good. And I'd just like to, of course, remind everyone to please follow us on Facebook. Of course, it's Delhi1816, or delhightownship.org, so. But that's the events for this month of August and September. So there is more to come in October, and of course, the gala at the end of the year, so. But I encourage everyone, please order the cookbook, so. Any questions or anything? Comments? Nothing?
Thanks so much, Pete.
Well, thank you. We appreciate it.
Everything's been great, and we'll look forward to the rest.
There you go. Thank you.
All right, that concludes presentations. Next is trustees correspondence. Trustee Oswald.
On behalf of the board, I just want to thank the skirt game committee. They always do a great job. They did two events this year, again, the tailgate party, which is Thursday, the same night with the police and fire night out, which was great. I know my son had a lot of fun, stayed up way too long, but the tailgate party is actually taking a life of its own. I know the numbers were a lot higher than usual, which is great, because it's starting to get more attention, it's drawing bigger crowds, and this is sixth annual one, so that's becoming almost its own event. And then the following night's obviously skirt game, and that was packed, and it was no problems from talking to the chief. So I thank you to our departments that helped out, I know, parks, police, fire. Again, skirt game committee always does a great job. I know Delhi doesn't have its own festival, so that is somewhat our festival, and it always gets a good turnout. I also want to congratulate Chief Campbell and Lieutenant Braun for being invited to the Delhi, or the first responders at golf outing, so we're expecting big things out of you, chief. And last but not least, just do the Dog Days again. Whenever we put on these concerts, we get an idea. It's a good barometer for us to understand how many people are going to show up, what kind of beer sales we get, what kind of food sales we get, because we are looking into doing some sort of concert series next year. The more events we have, the more people that show up, it gives us more accurate numbers. So I encourage everyone, it'll be a fun day. I'm sure it'll be hot, just like the skirt game, but come out, enjoy yourself, and hope to see you there.
Trustee Sturts.
Yes, I'd also like to reiterate thanks for all of our department to help with the skirt game. You may be wondering, if you watched Channel 5 tonight, there was a blue bag challenge. And for those of you who don't know what that is, residents of our community, adults and children, filled up some bags, brought them in, so that each officer received something in appreciation for our officers. The bags included some fun items, each with a saying, so sunscreen, so you don't get burnt out, lifesavers, to remind us many times that you've been one, starburst, for the burst of energy we sometimes need, smarties, to give wisdom for those split-second decisions, and payday, because we're not doing it for the money. So I thought it was very clever, and maybe you can watch 11 News tonight, it might be on again. But thank you so much to the citizens who provided this treat to our officers today and contributed to the cause.
I have a couple of things from correspondence. First, I would like to thank our resident Nancy Kavanaugh, who took a moment just to write a thank you note to the Delhi Police Department. She had a little issue with security in her home, and was very appreciative and complimentary of the professionalism of the Delhi Police Department. Secondly, I met a gentleman by the name of Jerry Miller. I want him to know that I did receive his correspondence regarding businesses, and will share that with Greg DeLong. So thank you for your interest and your support in growing the businesses of Delhi. And last, the fire department will celebrate this weekend the retirement of Lieutenant Bob McGowan. And Lieutenant Bob McGowan is a 44-year member of the Delhi Township Fire Department. So we would like to wish him the very best on his retirement. We thank him for his tremendous service, and just a note, Barbie Pal McGowan, thanks for sharing your husband for these years, and best of luck while he's at home, but happy retirement, Lieutenant Bob McGowan of the Delhi Fire Department.
Okay. A report from the fiscal officer.
The FAB board did wrap up the six-month reviews with department heads last week, so appreciate everyone's time on that. And also, the next FAB meeting will be Tuesday, August 16th, at 5:30 p.m. here in the Edna Building. That's all I have.
All right, no need for public hearing or reports from departments, so we'll begin with the reading of the resolutions. Mr. Looby.
I think we have wonderful...
You want my attention?
Yes.
You've got it.
Department? If I may, sorry, meant to tell you before, but I got a little busy. Wanted to give notice, this was posted on Facebook and the township webpage this morning. We have notice to residents, weather permitting, on Friday, August 12th, we will be doing a major concrete pour at our new firehouse location, 440 Greenwell Avenue. The construction, you know, it's going to have the pumper and the weather permitting, because if it rains, this won't happen, and be re... another date will have to happen, but they will be starting, you know, like 6 o'clock in the morning, 6:30 trucks arrive, so it's going to be an early morning, and of course, you can expect the road to be probably a flagger and things like that. So we wanted to be aware as soon as we know when things like this are scheduled, because, you know, somebody could be, you know, this could easily awaken them from their sleep pretty early that morning. We do apologize for any inconvenience, but, you know, this is a major construction, and it won't last long, and hopefully we'll get this building done. So we do wanted to make everyone around that facility, or anybody who used Greenwell in the morning, on their way to work, to be aware that there could be some slow-up of traffic around that. Also, I did want to just make sure that the board, specifically, I know the board understands, but I do want to make sure that residents understand that the approval of the motion that we had to accept the CDBG mini-grant, Bike Path, that is a study, that's an economic impact study, so that's not to move dirt, that's not to buy houses, that's not to extend the lane, that's not to do anything other than an impact economic analysis. We will be speaking with Stan Tech, who did our redevelopment plan on Friday, and we will be drawing up the specifics of what they can do for that limited funding amount. So once we have that, we'll be working with the county closely on the details of that, and hopefully, we... this is the first very baby step of, you know, finding out more information of, will this be beneficial if we do this, you know, from an economical perspective? So many more steps to go into that, but I don't want people to get too excited that we're moving dirt and things like that. That's not what that's about, so I just want to clearly communicate that. Thank you.
So the under-construction notice will be on Facebook, webpage, Channel 4, maybe Z-98, if you could...
Find Delhi Township dot com.
All right, thank you. That's on Z-98 as well. All right, reading of the resolutions? Mr. Looby.
Resolution 2016-149, resolution approving purchase order obligations, and current on behalf of the township by the township administrator, authorizing payment of certain purchase order obligations, and dispensing with a second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-150, resolution making appropriations for expenses in various funds, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Mr. Landrum.
Yes, this is an additional appropriation out of the police fund budget, patrol equipment purchases line item for $18,000. This is funding that is being utilized for active shooter training and equipment. Funds are being used from the sale of police vehicles. Unfortunately, we have to address such types of issues in training and have equipment for such purposes, but utilizing the vehicle sale, that all the sales are complete already, so the funds are already in the account, so this is appropriating $18,000 for those purposes.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-151, resolution authorizing grant of easement to Duke Energy Ohio, Inc., for overhead and underground facilities to be installed to serve their Greenwell Fire Station, authorizing Board President and another trustee to execute the grant of easement, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Again, Mr. Landrum.
Just simply, we had to complete this easement for Duke to be able to construct what they need to construct, to be able not just to power the firehouse, but to get the engineering and everything else that's needed to get it to the point that our developer, Turner, can take it from that point. So it's a lot involved, but we have to do the easement before Duke can start the work that they need, so that Turner can then in turn do the work they need. So a lot involved, but we needed this first, and this is just an issue of easement.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-152, resolution authorizing a contract with Bethesda Healthcare, Inc., for preventive health services in conjunction with the implementation of the township's wellness program, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? I think we have Human Resource Manager Lisa Dozier.
Thank you, trustees. This resolution is a follow-up to the motion you just approved tonight. We were awarded the Bureau of Workers' Comp Workplace Wellness Grant, so one of the qualifications of that grant is for us to contract with a wellness provider to provide two services to our employees. That would be the biometric screening, which they can do onsite, or through... some of our employees get physicals through their jobs, like our fire and police, so we can do it that way as well. And then the other service that they will be providing is online health risk assessments.
Okay.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-153, resolution authorizing a contract with Victoria Monahan for the provision of sound, lighting, and technicians for the concert in the park on August 27th, 2016, authorizing Dan Ryan to execute the contract, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Parks Director Josh Torbeck.
Thank you, trustees. Obviously, Dog Days of Delhi are coming up, and the Parks Department is a big part of the concert section of the Dog Days of Delhi. Although most of it's being donated, time and effort, as far as the concert band and stage, this will be a contract for the sound and lighting technician to come in and set everything up.
Okay, thank you.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-154, resolution renewing Arbor Run Subdivision Street Lighting District Contract pursuant to revised Code 515.081 and revised Code 9.30, confirming assessment pursuant to revised Code 515.11 and revised Code 515.08, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Mr. Stahlhaber.
I apologize for that. This is our annual, I'm sorry, our every-three-year renewal, the first of, I believe, four lighting districts that we have that are public lighting districts, and nothing really has... I should say this, there have been some changes in that the assessments have increased somewhat in light of the fact that our expenses in operating those districts continue to climb.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-155, resolution renewing Cedar Subdivision Street Lighting District Contract pursuant to revised Code 515.081 and revised Code 9.30, confirming assessment pursuant to revised Code 515.11 and revised Code 515.08, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Again, Mr. Stahlhaber?
Ditto.
Ditto?
Ditto.
Okay.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-156, resolution renewing Delhi Pike Street Lighting District Contract pursuant to revised Code 515.081 and revised Code 9.30, confirming assessment pursuant to revised Code 515.11 and revised Code 515.08, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Mr. Stahlhaber, is this a ditto?
This is the only...
This is the only one that's different.
No increase in assessment.
There's no increase in this one? Okay.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-157, resolution renewing River Point Subdivision Street Lighting District Contract pursuant to revised Code 515.081 and revised Code 9.30, confirming assessment pursuant to revised Code 515.11 and revised Code 515.08, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Mr. Stahlhaber?
That is the ditto. That is the...
This is a ditto.
Last of the three that there will be an increase in assessment.
Okay, all right.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution two thousand sixteen one fifty-eight, resolution declaring nuisance for accumulated debris at forty-four zero eight Delhi Pike, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, Mr. Roach?
Thank you, trustee Seavey, we received a complaint of accumulated debris at this address, we issued an order letter, order letter with no compliance, we inspected the property, the debris still there, so we're requesting that your Board declares property a nuisance, so we can address this violation with our nuisance abatement procedures.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Louie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution two thousand sixteen one fifty-nine, resolution declaring nuisance for excessive vegetation at eight-thirty-seven Allen Wood Court, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, Mr. Roach?
Thank you, trustee Seavey, we received a complaint of this occupied property of the accumulated debris, the majority's in the rear yard there, we issued an order letter with no compliance, we inspected the property, it hasn't been mowed yet, so we're requesting that your Board declares property a nuisance, so we can address this violation with our nuisance abatement procedures.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Louie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution two thousand sixteen one sixty, resolution declaring nuisance for excessive vegetation at fifty-four fifteen Casual Court, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, Mr. Roach?
Thank you, trustee Seavey, we received a complaint of this occupied property for the excessive vegetation, issued an order letter with no compliance, we inspected the property, it still hasn't been mowed yet, so we're requesting your Board declare this property a nuisance, so we can address this violation with our nuisance abatement procedures.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Louie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution two thousand sixteen one sixty-one, resolution clearing nuisance for excessive vegetation at one-eighty-six Francis Ridge Drive, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, again, Mr. Roach?
Thank you, trustee Seavey, second going around on this property this year, but we received, well, we've been monitoring the property, because it's vacant, we issued an informal order with no compliance, we inspected the property today, it's still in the same condition, so we're requesting your Board declare this property a nuisance again, so we can go ahead with our abatement, nuisance abatement procedures.
It's out-of-town, bank-owned?
It's actually in an individual's name.
Individual's name, okay.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Louie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution two thousand sixteen one sixty-two, resolution clearing nuisance for excessive vegetation at five-sixty-seven Greenwell Avenue, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, again, Mr. Roach?
Thank you, trustee Seavey, and we received a complaint of this occupied property, the excessive vegetation there, we issued an informal order with no compliance, we inspected the property today, it's in the same condition, so we're requesting that your Board declare this property a nuisance, so we can address this violation with our nuisance abatement procedures.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.